To come in there. Laurie, the reason that you are here, at least I think, is there were some questions about, you know, are we ready? Is Blackhawk County ready? Is Waterloo ready if we should have a catastrophic tornado event, weather event? And you are the person that can answer that. So why don't you give us, that are present here today, an update as to what would happen if we had a Moore, Oklahoma-type tornado come through Waterloo?
Right. So what I did, just to give you a brief overview, my job is to manage resources before, during, and after a disaster. I am employed by the Emergency Management Commission, which is a member of the Board of Supervisors, the mayor of each town, and the sheriff. So they have put me in charge of emergency management, and I do a multitude of different things when we don't have disasters. But during disasters, that's my main responsibility, is to open up the Emergency Operations Center to help the mayors and/or the Board of Supervisors declare an emergency within Blackhawk County, and to transmit that information to the state. And then the state takes that information and transfers it to the governor, who then makes the governor's declaration, and then it goes on up to the president if we need federal resources. So that's how that works. What I've handed out to you today is just a brief overview that starts out with elected officials, and then it goes on to what my role as emergency manager is. And I can give you time to read that, or you can read that at your leisure at some other time. But the more important thing that I brought in is one of my commission members, Jason Dolph, who's a member of the Raymond Fire Department, as the fire chief, is also a guru in GIS. So he actually took the Moore, Oklahoma tornado and superimposed it over Blackhawk County.
Wow.
So the first map that you see that looks like this is actually Moore, Oklahoma tornado put over the top of Blackhawk County, and it's just a very generic map, and it shows. The second one that you have, actually, is the aerial view of what that tornado will look like if it would have happened in Blackhawk County. And the reason we wanted to do that is every disaster is depending upon the size and the scope of the disaster operation, what it impacts. Does, and you can clearly see, or maybe not, from the aerial view map, that specific tornado, if it were to hit Waterloo, takes out probably four fire stations, our major trauma center, which is, sure, for Harold.
Harold.
Okay.
So we good to go?
I can do that.
For an actual meeting?
Huh?
Yeah, I'm recording it, but.
We can open it up.
Here. And then two of these.
I hear you kicked the ball in three times, pick-a-pot. Shh, the toe-pot. Shh.
Not that that disaster's gonna happen here, and everybody can take the opportunity to knock on wood now, or start saying some prayers.
When the mayor comes, can we, Mr. Mayor, you wanna call out a roll call or something?
Just a minute.
We can do it while you're.
Yeah, now that we have four, we're just gonna take a roll. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole, Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Okay. Laurie, thank you.
You're welcome. So as I was saying, he took the Moore, Oklahoma tornado, and he superimposed it over Blackhawk County. In this legend, the area that's in brown on the map, which is supposed to be green, is the one-mile swath of damage. And then the red puts it out to two miles, which is what happened in Moore, Oklahoma. So we've, on this map, we lose about four fire stations. We lose our medical center, which is Covenant Medical Center. Also, if you look at that, that's a direct hit to downtown Waterloo. So we have the potential for losing the courthouse, Waterloo City Hall, the jails, and everything else that falls down Blackhawk County, downtown, the metropolitan area. So if you ask me, are we prepared for this type of tornado, I would say we would do the best we can do with the resources we will have left. And what we can do, and what we do all the time, is we plan with our partners. We plan with the fire, the police, the sheriff. We do exercises. We bring all of those partners together. We do a scenario. We try to figure out, if this were to happen here, how would we respond? How would we, if the court, if the city hall is destroyed, how are you gonna do normal operations? Where are you gonna put your, you know, your police headquarters? Where, you can't rely on the jail anymore, if it's also damaged. Our 911 communication center may be damaged, although it's in the basement, it may have some issues. A tornado this size would probably severely tax our communication efforts with our fire and our police, because cellphone towers will go down, or they will be overloaded. So I think we will do the best we can do. We were, are gonna be quickly overwhelmed by this type of disaster situation. I do know, in talking to the area hospitals, Moore, Oklahoma had several individuals who, casualties, either dead or injured individuals. From talking to Allen Hospital, they said the most they could handle would be 50 people. And that would, is all based upon their staffing, their bed availability, how fast people are coming in. They said that their morgue can hold up to four people. After that, they're gonna be overwhelmed. They will have to have reefer trucks to put bodies in. Covenant Medical Center, both Covenant and Sartori, Sartori said they could do probably 35. They had 28 patients arrive within 30 minutes after the Parkersburg tornado and did okay, based on the staffing pattern that they had on that Sunday evening. Covenant Medical said that, again, the numbers will vary based on who's on staff, how quickly people can get in. But you also have to realize, you know, we're gonna have blocked roads, we're gonna have downed power lines, we're gonna have trees that are down that are gonna hamper people from getting to where they need to be. So it'll take a coordinated effort, as quickly as we can get the Emergency Operations Center open, and as quickly as we can start asking for those resources from the state, because we're gonna be overwhelmed very quickly.
What can Allen Hospital do? You mentioned Sartori and Rest.
Yep. Allen Hospital said, depending on the staffing, the bed availability, and how fast the patients are coming in, they could do 50 people. And they, they said that the problem is, we don't have the morgue space here at any of our hospitals. So if we had a lot of casualties that were dead, we would have to do something else. I would say, for the city of Waterloo, the types of things that you have to look at is taking care of your staff. You're gonna need people to, you know, Public Works to clean roads, and a lot of police, and a lot of fire, and a lot of those different entities. This map also shows that, depending on where this tornado comes in, it could also impact Hudson, which would impact who you get from Hudson that may be able to help you. It's also gonna impact Raymond, parts of Cedar Falls. So this was a huge tornado. A huge tornado.
Laurie, is there any chance, through you and Blackhawk County, emergency medical and so forth, is there any possibility that you check with the state or the, or the school board about maybe taking over Logan Junior High School as an emergency-type thing? I mean, there are sets of buildings that's not being utilized now, which could be and would hold a very large number of people.
Right. The school board, we don't specifically have an agreement with them, but they are one of our community partners. I attend their safe school meetings, and we do that type of thing. We talk to one another about how we can utilize their facilities. They are also one of our partners for shelters, if we need shelters in school buildings for the general public. One of the issues that comes up with that is if you don't have power to those facilities. Waterloo has done a fantastic job at building all these wonderful new schools, but none of them have generators. None of them. And so if a disaster happened in the middle of summer, and it's really hot, and it's humid, and people need a place to go, that's why we generally send folks up to you and I, because they have their own power plant. And they, they can have the cooling ability and generate their own power, even if power lines are down, so.
Of course, Logan's not utilized as a school any longer.
Nope.
But I do think it had a generator and so forth in it.
Yeah, I'd have to check. I'm not really sure.
Okay.
I'm not really sure. But we do plan. We do, do those things with our community partners. We talk, you know, I have an agreement with the schools for their bus services. Waterloo just recently changed from the Waterloo Community Schools owning their buses to Durham School Services. And I've been working with them over the, since November of last year, to try to get that agreement signed. In case we had to move large groups of people, could we call in the schools? And they're not signing the agreement yet, but we continue to work on it, so. What I can do, too, is if you'd like, taking this information that we have here today, we can actually plan on doing a tabletop exercise. We could do that in the evening. We could bring in your folks in an informal setting around a table, and take this scenario that we have here on paper, and build it up to if the, several injects that, if this were to happen, how would we solve that problem? How would we work through those things before it really happened?
Laurie?
Yes?
How many communities outside the city of Waterloo are part of our plan? And let's say Dyke is part of our plan. Let's say they're the ones that get hit and not us. I'm just assuming that all these other communities go to help Dyke. Yes?
Um, no. Dyke is not part of our plan. I'm only responsible for the towns within Blackhawk County.
Oh, okay.
So Dyke is in Grundy County, so we're not responsible for that. But if this were a wide-area event, if there were multiple counties that were affected, from my understanding, what would happen is, any of the resource requests that go into the state are based on severity of need. So that's why, the quicker we put our declarations in place, the quicker we get those resource needs to the state, the sooner we can get help. But it's based on severity.
Okay. Steve?
Laurie, I think maybe part of the question, too, was, we see other communities that have these mock situations, and if we've had any here in the area, and I think it might have been Bob that asked the question, if we have had, maybe he missed it, but I guess I don't remember seeing that. I don't, do you do that once every five years, or do you do it?
We do them as the group warrants. Like, every year, we do an exercise with Waterloo Airport, because they have requirements from the FAA that they have to do. We do them with, in conjunction with our other partners. We did one with the Waterloo Schools last year, or this fiscal year, but before January 1st. And we do them as they're warranted. I will tell you that if you can get a group of people, and you may not be able to, but there's a wonderful opportunity that happens out at Emmitsburg, Maryland. We can take a group of people solely from the city of Waterloo, our police chief, our fire services person, members of the council, the mayor, and other pertinent individuals from the city of Waterloo, and we can send them all of our information. They will actually bring us out to Emmitsburg, Maryland, on their dime. They will reimburse all the costs, and they will work, run us through a disaster exercise specifically for Waterloo. And I can also look to see if they will come here and do it. But it's my understanding that we have to go there.
Laurie, didn't we just have a disaster drill?
We had a disaster drill. We worked with the Waterloo Police Department on the weapons-of-mass-destruction exercise that happened at the Cattle Congress, and we were a partner in that. But as far as having a specific one for a tornado event, we haven't done one of those recently.
And you'd be involved, too, in the event of floods, like in 2008?
Yes.
You were involved in that. And, you know, one of the things I heard, and I never did hear final resolution of that, is some of that stuff, we're supposed to exercise, or, or make sure we know how it works, and where things are at, once a year? And maybe that hadn't been done. I don't know if it had or it hadn't, but since then, is that something we are doing on an annual basis? And are you responsible for that, or is the city, or Eric, or?
Collectively, with my responsibilities within Blackhawk County are to do at least three exercises a year. Now, that includes from any type of venue. It includes the Waterloo Police Department weapons-of-mass-destruction exercise. It includes the airport exercise, and any, the school exercise in Cedar Falls, any of the exercises that we are involved in. I'm required to do three of those a year. So I'm also required to update our multi-hazard plan that emergency management writes, that works with all of our partners, law enforcement, fire, communications, Public Works, the Anabom Plan, and all of those different entities under the multi-hazard plan to make sure that we're prepared. And I have to do four of those annexes every single year, to update those, to be compliant with the state.
Just one more. Laurie, are we, are we stockpiling any kind of emergency things, like sandbags, water, anything like that?
No, because when disasters happen, the buck stops with you folks. I have no authority and monies to stockpile anything. It would be up to the cities to buy those items. If you have them.
Yeah, we have sandbags.
You have sandbags.
We're required to maintain a certain number of sandbags, and I believe we're in compliance with that. So if you have a major disaster, the number that we would have on hand likely would not be enough, but we have contacts and get more, just like we did in 2008. And you, you can't really fill them too far ahead of time, because they rot and fall apart. So you, it's kind of a, you do it now.
Yeah, we have lots of the bags. They're not filled, but we have lots of sandbags.
Medical supplies, water, that stuff that we don't stockpile, anything like that?
I wouldn't be up to the city to stockpile medical supplies, other than what the fire department has, but.
Yeah, that expires.
Generally speaking, are we in pretty good shape?
I think so. I think we've built a pretty solid foundation, working with our community partners, having Dan on the commission, and working with all of the mayors within the towns. I think so. I think, you know, we talk to the health departments, the schools, fire, police. We do that on an ongoing basis all year long. So I think as far as communicating with one another, we do a really great job at that. And we've built that relationship and that foundation with those folks.
Very good.
Yeah, my mind keeps going back to 2008, and coming over to the, what was it called, out on Newell Street?
Emergency Operations Center.
And I think the mayor then assigned me to work and communicate there, and just seeing all the work that the different county agencies were doing at that time. It was really, really a bad situation, but a lot of good work doing, being done during that time as well. So we compliment you for all that you do in your agency.
Motion to adjourn? Aye.
Further questions?
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thanks, Laurie. Appreciate it very much. Thanks for what you do.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Welcome to this Monday, June 10th, regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council. We got a good crowd tonight in the audience, so welcome to all of you, and all of you that might be watching on our public access television. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by our Human Rights Director, Pastor Abraham Funchess.
Please, Your Honor, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, to propose an amended agenda. And that amendment is the changing of the name of the plan in item number 15 on our agenda. Also, with the approval of the agenda, amended agenda, I move that we approve amendments from June 3rd.
Wow. Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're gonna start tonight with a proclamation. Kent, are you going to take this, or who's, who's gonna accept this?
We've got Billy Bailey.
Oh, is Billy here? Billy, you're here. Very good. Come on up, please. It's, this proclamation tonight is to recognize the Waterloo, or excuse me, it's Museums Week, and we are going to recognize Museums Week in Waterloo. So come on up, don't be afraid here, guys, you've done this before, for crying out loud. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas Waterloo is home to a diverse and vital group of museums and cultural organizations that serve as educational institutions, preservation agencies, agencies of research, and cultural centers. And whereas Waterloo museums represent a multitude of disciplines and learning experiences, including art museums, historial, historical? Historial? What should that be?
Historical.
Historical museums and sites. We're all having trouble this morning, Quinn, this evening. Nature preserves, science centers, botanical gardens, historic houses, natural history, cultural centers, and children's museums. And whereas Waterloo museums encourage curiosity and provide a source of enjoyment and education for every generation and each and every member of the community. And whereas Waterloo museums nourish minds and spirits by fostering contemplation, exploration, critical thinking, and dialogue to advance knowledge, understanding of history, science, the arts, and the natural world. And whereas Waterloo museums forge relationships with community partners such as schools, libraries, neighborhood, and social service organizations to foster civic understanding. And whereas Waterloo museums are vital to the preservation, interpretation, and presentation of local and regional heritage. And whereas Waterloo museums contribute significantly to the livability and economic viability of the Cedar Valley and its communities, create jobs, and attract tourists, local visitors, and businesses. And whereas, the city of Waterloo seeks to bring important recognition of this commemorative week, and invites all citizens to use this milestone to recognize and celebrate the contributions of Waterloo museums. Now therefore, I, Buck Clark, mayor of the city of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of June 9th through the 16th, 2013, as Waterloo Museums Week, and call upon all to participate in and celebrate the contributions museums make to the Cedar Valley. And truly, folks, and I'll just mention this as a side note, we have a tremendous gem in our museums that we have in Waterloo, between the Grout and the Arts Center, and all of the different things we have. We have lots of stuff to do here. So I don't know if that's for you, Kent, or for Billy. Would either one of you, or both of you, like to say a couple of words?
I would.
Yes or no?
Kent's going to.
Yes. Kent's going to. I thought you would. Kent?
First of all, I'll go on record and say, I am, I for one, am extremely proud of the cultural resources, the museum resources, that we have here in our community. And I hope that our community is, or will become proud of those resources as well. I'm often struck by the fact that we entertain a lot of out-of-town visitors at the Center for the Arts. And very often, I hear from those visitors, many of whom come from very large metropolitan areas with many resources of their own, how excited and impressed they are with the museums here in our community. And in fact, many of them state that our museum resources are even better than what they have back home. So that is a feather in our cap. And as I say, I certainly hope that we can use this week to encourage our local residents to take advantage of those museum resources. And I would invite and challenge any of them to go back and visit a museum that they've visited before, or seek out a new museum to visit. And in order to help facilitate that, the Grout Museum District and the Waterloo Center for the Arts will offer a special promotion this week. Anyone who mentions Waterloo or Iowa Museum Week, when they're purchasing their admissions, will get in for half price during this week. So a little extra incentive to check out the great museums in the area.
Very good. Yep, thank you very, and both of you. Thank you, guys, for what you do. Appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, and next, we need to recognize our June Team Member of the Month. Donna, you're here. Congratulations. Stand up for us, so we can all see. Donna Bock is with our street department. And Donna is one of those people, you've been with us 30-plus years, Donna.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. My goodness. Must've started when you.
That's a long way.
I was gonna say 10, but. But anyway, Donna, the Team Member of the Month is, is a big deal to me. And I think it is to the folks that are awarded this. And lots of times, the folks that are presented with our Team Member of the Month, and then our Team Member of the Year awards, don't necessarily do anything, or don't do anything significant individually, but just are good employees, and that come to work every day, and that are responsible, that we can count on, that always have a smile on their face, and that we just know are gonna be there for us. And Donna certainly fits that bill. She does a great job in the street department, 38 years has been doing that. So Donna, congratulations on being June's Team Member of the Month, and we just so greatly appreciate your presence here in the city. Thank you very much. Donna, I always, I tell people that come in for these kind of recognitions, that you're welcome to stay and view the whole council meeting and get a little civics lesson here, but if you don't want to, you don't have to, you can leave yourself.
Who would wanna leave from all this excitement?
I don't know. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Hart?
It's a move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B6. And also with the approval of the consent agenda, a move that we pay our bills, which will be raised by our Finance Vice Chair.
The bills this week are $1,558,761.17. That's 1,558,761.17. Second.
Very good. Motion is second for the consent agenda. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns regarding the consent agenda? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. We have some resolutions tonight, if we'll just go ahead and do the, take the first three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two, I'd like to adopt a resolution establishing a complete streets policy for the city of Waterloo, and the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. Item number three is adopting a resolution approving a recommendation of award of bid to Vermeer, Iowa, and Northern Missouri, Opella, Iowa, in the amount of $133,268 for the purchase of one Vermeer CT-514 Compost Turner. And item number four is adopting a resolution approving. And item number four is adopting a resolution approving a request to install temporary no parking signs on the north side of Dale Street from East Fourth Street to Highway 63 Logan Avenue, due to the East Donald Street and Highway 63 detour.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding two, three, or four in the resolutions? Any? Mr. Schmidt.
On item number one, I did have a couple of questions, I got some...
What did that mean, number two?
I'm sorry, thank you very much, item number two, yes, the first item. Some questions over the weekend, and I know the City Council and the city are very supportive of the Blue Zones concept, and the way I understand it, this item needs to pass in order for us to continue down that road. And the questions I got were, the, some of the wording in here having to do with requiring, requiring complete street elements be considered and incorporated into the project, and various comments about using the term "street," but then also talking about pedestrians, bicyclists, I think somewhere here there was maybe wheelchair, and I think the question or the concern was whether or not, Kimball Avenue, for example, if we're going to make that street a situation where the cars driving out there are going to be contending with pedestrians and motorized wheelchairs and things like that, or if they're going to be kind of off separate by themselves. So I think that was, that was one concern, and then the other concern was the committee that exemptions to this policy shall only be granted when the Complete Streets Advisory Committee recommends, and so again, the question of what level of authority that committee is going to have, so.
We could ask Brian, or Brian, do you want us to take a stab to start with, please? Brian Schoen with...
Thank you.
InterCog?
Yeah, Brian Schoen with the InterCog Office, also a member of the Waterloo Policy Committee, working through the Blue Zones on this particular policy. With regard to Kimball Avenue as a specific project, I think that process is moving ahead as is in light of some of these things, policy not being in place. Certainly, some elements are being integrated in, discussed, and moving forward that way. With regard to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, we haven't yet written the bylaws, we haven't yet written those particular structural or organizational items. Certainly, we have set this up, at least in draft, that that committee provides a recommendation to two staff or departmental directors, who will then in turn provide a recommendation to council and the mayor. Decision will remain here, the way we have written it as of now. It's actually an excellent segue in terms of where we go from here, if this moves forward this evening. Certainly, our committee needs to get moving, and within about six months, we need to have some of those organizational documents done, i.e. bylaws or guidelines or whatever you like in terms of a description, as well as begin to identify strategies, funding sources, and some of those other kinds of things. So with regard to separation of uses, certainly that's going to be a discussion kind of project by project. With regard to the committee, in the end, ultimately, we've got to draw some of those documents.
The, and how are the members of that committee, how are they determined, or how are those folks picked?
We said, at least in draft form, that the names would be submitted by the mayor, appointment by the mayor and approval by the council, is how we set everything up.
I mean, do they, do they represent certain entities, or...
We have a list of mayes in there, in terms of that committee, I think it's number 10. If you look at the policy there, probably the middle paragraph defines how that appointment process is to work and where they're to come from. Certainly, we're open to anybody that's willing to serve on the committee. There'll be plenty of work and plenty of time and effort that will be needed in order to get this accomplished, so we do have it set up that way.
Thank you.
And Steve, just kind of for comment from my perspective, I see this, the Complete Streets policy as, as we have in many of our other kind of boards and commissions, you know, they make recommendations and considerations when applicable. I'm sure that, you know, not every single street is going to be applicable to have a bike trail or a walking path on it, but I think if we look at this as being a concept that we would like to work towards when we can, then I think that we're in good shape with that, and adopting this resolution will keep that at a top-of-mind situation for us, so that we always have in consideration that we need to encourage walkability and bikability as we look at streets.
Thank you.
You bet. Any further comments or questions, anybody, several Blue Zone people here, if you'd like to... There's a gentleman behind you, Brian, that would like to speak.
John Sherbin, 1715, Robin Road. I'd just like to bring in the fact about Highway 58 and Viking Road, heavy traffic and bicycles and pedestrians don't get along. They never have and they never will. There's too heavy a traffic, our traffic flow is not good in Waterloo during the busy times when people are going to work, coming back. Hawkeye Tech, Highway 21, every road that we've got plugs up in the morning and at night, and if we've got pedestrians and we've got other people moving around on there, it's going to add to the congestion. We have trouble with the two-lane, if two people try to turn on two, a two-lane turn doesn't work in Waterloo because, I don't know why. We need to take a serious look, we need engineers, not volunteers, on these, on these planning committees, we need engineers that understand the traffic flow and the various things that have to be done, and not just guessing by golly. I have not a problem with the Blue Zones on a lot of things, traffic isn't one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any further questions, counsel? It's roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Motion carries, the next three, please, five, six, and seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walper.
Number five is a resolution approving increasing ambulance fees by 6% and increasing mileage charges by $2 per mile, effective July 1st, 2013.
Second.
Number six.
Excuse me.
He's excited about that.
Number six is a resolution approving a contracted golf course rental contract with Waterloo J.C.'s for the Waterloo Open Event to be held in July 17th through the 21st, 2013, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said contract. Number seven is a resolution approving a three-year collective bargaining agreements with AFSME for the professionals group, planners, engineers, and IT, and the police lieutenant and code enforcement, property evidence, and data systems manager.
Second.
Very good. Motion is second on five, six, and seven. Counsel, questions, comments, concerns about any of those three? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
I would vote yes on five and six and no on seven.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Thank you, counsel. Eight, nine, and 10, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move that we adopt a resolution approving a 2.1% salary increase for non-bargaining employees, effective July 1st, 2013. Nine, a move to adopt a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Agreement, number 13-HEZ-092 for Pillar Properties LLC for the rehabilitation of 13 multifamily units located at 727 West Parker Avenue within the enterprise zone, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And 10, a move to adopt the resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of work acceptance, I mean, work performed by Peterson Contractors Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa, at a total cost of $1,191,033.98 in conjunction with FY 2009 West Charlotte Road Contract Number 759.
Second. Very good. Counsel, questions or comments regarding eight, nine, or 10? Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Grant, I'm just going to mention very briefly that the reason I voted no on seven and also I'll vote no on eight is until we, as a council, figure out how to pay our bills and balance our budget without taking money out of the reserves, I just can't support a pay increase. We've got great city employees, but we just can't keep taking money out of the savings account to pay raises, so that's why I'll be voting against that.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Further comments? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No on eight, yes on nine and 10.
Very good, the motions carry. 11, 12, 13, and 14, let's do the next four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
11, a move to adopt a resolution authorizing the assignment of rebates document to Miles and Judith Reynas from the prior development agreement with NCN Limited for property located at 25 Westfield Avenue, Unit 9LC, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And in 12, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the assignment of rebates documents to Nancy Stack, Mayor, from the prior development agreement with Carmen Dumphy for property located at 25 Westfield Avenue, Unit 4, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. 13, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the assignment of rebates as well, document to Robert Polisinski from the prior development agreement with Mark Del Rizzo for property located at 25 Westfield Avenue, Number, Unit Number 10, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number 14, move to adopt a resolution authorizing the assignment of rebates document to Vets Truck Wash Inc. from the prior development agreement with Veteran Enterprise LTD for property located at 720 North Elk Run Road, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second. Very good. Counsel, questions or comments regarding 11, 12, 13, or 14? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Very good. All of the remaining items are setting date of hearings, counsel, I've checked with the clerk and with the attorney, and I think we can do all of those in one fell swoop reading, just setting the dates of hearing, so if somebody would like to take that on...
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
In 15, 15, 16, 17, 18, all of them, 19 and 20...
I mean, you're going to have to read the whole thing, Mr. Hart, but just go ahead and read all of them rather than reading two or three at a time, just read them all.
In its entirety?
I think so, yeah.
All right. Move to adopt a resolution setting date of hearing in 15 for June 24th, 2013, to approve an amendment to the Logan Area Urban Development Plan to add a new project, wait, resolution setting date of hearing, June 24th, to approve an amendment to the Logan Avenue Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan to add a new project by KWWL Television, Inc. for the renovation of the existing commercial building located at 500 East Fourth Street to the plan, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. 16, that, setting that date of hearing as June 24th, 2013, to approve a development agreement between KWWL Television, Inc. and the City of Waterloo for the renovation of the existing building located at 500 East Fourth Street, and additional new construction on the site with a minimum investment of $2,500,000, and offering tax rebates for 10 years at 70%, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. 17 is setting a date of hearing for June 24th, 2013, to approve a request by Hy-Vee, Inc. for a site plan amendment to the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for a 7,008 square foot expansion to the store for a Hy-Vee Wine and Spirits located at 1422 Fleming Drive, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. 18 is setting a date of hearing, June 24th, 2013, as well, for request by Adolf Patel for a site plan amendment to the S1 Shopping Center District to allow for the construction of a Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel located west of 2127 Laporte Road, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. 19 is a date of hearing of June 24th, 2013, to approve a request by Residential Development Partners LLC, Jim Ellis, for a site plan amendment to the R1RP Plan One and Two Family Residence District to allow for the construction of 12 single-family homes on 3.19 acres, generally located north of Eureka Street and east of Vermont Street, Baltimore Field, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. And in 20, setting that date of hearing to, for June 24th, to approve a request by Residential Development Partners LLC, Jim Ellis, for a site plan amendment to the R1RP Plan One and Two Family Residence District to allow for the construction of five single-family homes on 1.13 acres, generally bounded by Williston Avenue, Pleasant Street, West 7th Street, and Allen Street, which is Williston Field, and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Very good, well done, Council. Hart, counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those hearings that we're setting? Madam Clerk, the roll call votes, please.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Walper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. The motions carry. It was a brief agenda tonight, ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of our regularly scheduled agenda. It's time for oral presentations. I know we have one person, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address mayor or counsel, now is the time to do so. Please just come to the microphone and give us your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes, if you would, please. Should go on, yeah.
Good evening, Latonya Graves, 607 East Donald Street, Waterloo. I'm coming tonight to inform the council and those in chamber, our 18th Annual Juneteenth Celebration that will take place June 14th through the 16th, pass those around, June 14th through the 16th. On Friday, June 14th, a basketball game will take place at Gates Park, then a gospel celebration will take place at Mount Carmel Baptist Church at 7:00 PM. And then on Saturday morning, June 15th, the championship basketball games will resume 8:00 AM. We will have an NAACP Peace Walk featuring the Crusaders Drill Team, beginning at 10:00 AM at Union Baptist Church, 209 Jackson Street. We will have a free health fair, a kids' corner with bounce houses, tricycle races, three-legged races, beanbag toss, hangman, all sorts of games. Shout More Records will present several gospel artists that will perform from 12 to 4. We will have a custom car and motorcycle show that will be from 3 to 5, and then a night out sponsored by the African-American Historical and Cultural Museum will be at the River Loop from 4 to 10. And then on Sunday, June 16th, we'll have Juneteenth Sunday Service at Payne AME Church, located at 1044 Mobile Street at 10:00 AM. And then Lenny Center from Minneapolis will present old-school music in the park at Gates, and that will be from 2 to 6:00 PM. And then we will have female basketball games beginning at 3:00 PM, and then the female football games that will begin at 6:00 PM. And we'll have various vendors and social service organizations in the park, so everyone come on out and support unity in the community, the 18th Annual Juneteenth Celebration.
Thanks, Latonya, very much. You've got quite a lineup here with all the stuff that's going on, so...
Yes, that's why I forgot to, you know.
You've been busy, we forgot to contact you and you forgot to contact us, because normally we have a proclamation for Juneteenth, and we dropped that ball, so we are proclaiming that everybody should get out and enjoy Juneteenth Celebration in Waterloo, starting June 14th through the 16th.
Yes.
At Gates Park, which is at Fourth and Lester, starts on Friday, the 14th, and there's something going on just about all the time from the time it starts, Friday afternoon and evening through Saturday and through Sunday, so I'm sure there's going to be something for everybody. Thank you for sharing that information.
Thank you.
And Tanya, that would be at lower gates at East Fourth Street and Lester, right?
Yes.
And then, does community development or Perry from Neighborhood Services have this to post on the Waterloo Channel?
Yeah, well, I sent it to them, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Latonya. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to mayor or council tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file oral comments and to adjourn.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, counsel?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.